I'm going to call the voter selectmen meeting back to order for, where are we at? April 24th, 2017. We started tonight's meeting in executive session where we talked about a contract, the HEMA contract, also with potential litigation for a beach road issue. No votes, no action were taken. So, going into regular session now, I'm going to inform you that the town will be video and audio taping as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience that wishes to audio or videotape must notify the chairman now. Hearing no one, will you please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm going to start and ask for a brief moment of silence for our director of assessing's mother, Donna Molino's mother passed away suddenly, so please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. Anyone up for weekly briefing?
Dave, Michael, if you don't mind, I'd just like to report on a meeting that I attended on Tuesday, which was a wastewater presentation, and the meeting was designed for the East Harwich residence. I thought the presentation was very good, covered a lot of the issues that needed to be covered, and I thought the question and answer period was excellent. Some good questions that need answers before we go forward. The questions that came up was, does the town plan to help for the payment of connecting to the sewer? This is not done in Chatham, but it is done in other places, and I know this group have talked about it, so I think we need to get a little bit more specific. I know there are legal issues that we have to deal with, but anyway, that's the point. There was also a question about what happens on a private road after the sewers are put in? Does the road get repaved? And the other question is, the pipe itself, who owns it after it gets put in? Is it handled like our current water pipes? We basically own them or not? And those answers, I think, we should try and deliver quickly. We may not have it in the form of a charter change or that, but we should try and do that. I think it would be good for people. There were other questions, but those were the focus of them. Changing the subject for just a slight second, what's been appearing in a number of text messages that are running around on social media, let's say, are coming up again. They usually come up before town meeting and present people's ideas. I just would like to warn people that when you read all these ideas, check them out because they're opinions unless there are real facts given with them. There was a, there were questions about, the ballot question from last year, about how the costs were devised. If you're interested in that, on page 122 of the 2016 annual book, it's all written in there for each of the questions. So, I just suggest be careful with what you read.
Thank you, Angelo. Anyone else for weekly briefing? Okay, for public comment announcement, I just asked that you speak directly into the microphone and keep it brief. Peggy?
Chris.
Sorry, not Peggy.
I'm about a foot taller than Peggy.
A little bit.
Chris Joyce, Chair of Voter Information Committee. I just want to let you know, remind you that we're hosting a debate amongst the three candidates for selectmen on May 9th. Get those pens out. One o'clock here in the Griffin Room. We'll also, it'll be moderated by the League of Women Voters, and we'll also have it telecast a number of times up to the election date.
Great. Thank you, Chris.
Sorry. Channel 18 will be running, starting tomorrow, a whole bunch of informational pieces that are noteworthy to voters, including Station 2 Warren article, a bunch of wastewater pieces, Sacquetucket Harbor, the Voter Information Committee waste, Financial State, and we'll be doing the pre-town meeting, which is tomorrow, and that will air all weekend until town meeting.
Great.
So, tune in. You can find everything, all of those clips, on our YouTube, and you can find our program schedule on the town website.
Thank you, Jamie.
My name is Barbara Hagaman, and I live over in the East Wind complex, and I provided all of you with a handout that is a summary of some of the information that has come up both at the last two wastewater committee meetings that the public was invited to. And so, I did some research simply because people have expressed concerns, and I brought a number of my neighbors with me this evening so that they may want to add to my comments, which I will keep brief since you have a handout in front of you. On the first page of the handout, I think the summary of what prompted the concern is that when you look at the report provided to the community and to the town in general about the engineering plan, it's an outstanding plan, and I think that most everyone who has reviewed it thinks that the proposals in it are very worthy and appropriate for what needs to be done to clean up the Harwich waters and those surrounding the community. The concern that seemed not to be addressed in the project plan, in the publication, either in the material that we received at the meetings or online, or in discussion at those meetings until we started raising the questions, was what is the way that the residents of the community are going to be able to afford to pay their piece for hookup? The mill rate question seemed nicely settled in the report. The issue was hookup. And so, I did some digging going back and saying, what, first of all, what can an individual homeowner afford in the context of a year's worth of income? And so, I went back to some basic online data and then went to, based on a comment from one of the planners that was at the meeting the other night, Angelo, I didn't know his name, but he sat behind me.
David Jones?
No, it was Larry Brophy.
Larry Brophy.
Okay, Larry Brophy. And he pointed out that the Cape Cod Commission data had referred to the American Community Survey, the five-year interim survey. So, I went back and looked at that data on the Cape Cod Commission website. And so, the information on your handout indicates that the median household income in 2015, kind of estimated by the survey, was $68,267, and that in a town, there are about 5,430 households. The older adult population, and I had asked Chris this at one of the meetings, what was the percentage of people that were kind of over age 60 in the community? And I think, Chris, you guessed that it was at about 40 percent. If you bring that number down to age 45, which in the community survey would be the age of my son, and is considered an older adult, in total, you've got 3,600 and change of people who are over age 45 and over age 65, 3,600. So, that comes to about 58 percent of the population. So, when you think about 58 percent of your population having to find perhaps an average of $7,000 to pay for the hookup to the sewer system, particularly in that first wave of 600 homes identified in the plan, it's a bit of a staggering number. And so, people were starting to go, this is not something that I feel comfortable with, this is not necessarily something I could vote in favor of. Not that I'm against the plan or the intent of the wastewater management plan at all. I think most everybody feels it's the right thing to be doing. And I, my father and mom lived in Brewster, and my dad was a shellfish warden. I remember when there was eel grass, when we could go scalloping in November. And to not see that now, I mean, I personally have seen the impact. So, it's not that in what I'm saying to you tonight, there is an objection to the concept of the plan. It's only the financing and the fact that there isn't anything built into the project plan as it stands today that clearly defines for the community how the funding would occur and how it would help people pay for it, not necessarily in a lump, but over some period of time. And in fact, just for a little extra drama, I went back and said, okay, the average family tax bill is $4,000 or $4,200 a year, and the plan is talking about, well, maybe $400 and change this year for the sewer fees, but maybe next year it'll be a little bit more, and sometimes it'll be a little bit less. And then you add to that a $7,000 average cost for a hookup, there are a number of homes in that 600 that are going to get hit with a bill of, in a given year, of $11,000. Well, when you go back to your average household income, that's a pretty startling number. And so, the request that is coming through, and once again, I did do a quick demographic on how many people over age 64 would be really severely impacted by this. They're not necessarily people who are classified as low income, but when you're looking at something that's 10 percent of your annual pre-tax income, that's a pretty big number to be thinking about. So, the questions that started to arise was where and how are people funding this in other communities? And I thank Larry Ballantyne for providing me with a list of some of the options, and I believe, Chris, that you had mentioned some of these at the last meeting that we were at. So, this is on the next to last page of your handout. And so, really, there are a lot of questions that are still out there that haven't been answered, and yet, you're asking of the town warrant on May 1st for us to approve a $9 million spend for the next phase of the project when we're really not quite sure how we're going to pay out of our individual household incomes for this at all. And so, the request is pretty straightforward. First of all, and this is the next to last page of your slide deck, is that in some way, at the May 1st meeting, you clearly define to the taxpayers the project planning piece that has not yet occurred, what it will be, how it may play out, and what role and say the members of the community will have in this. So, really, what is being presented here is please provide us at least with a preliminary project plan that is going to ultimately be as granular and finely tuned as what the engineering plan and the legal plan are. So, that financing plan is key. The second part of it is to communicate it as broadly and as quickly to the community as you can, that you're doing this, and that you've assigned a point person who owns this piece of the project, so that people know that you really are serious about doing this, and that to the degree that you can make some commitment on the public record, even this evening, if you could do that, so that people know that you are serious in your intentions, because I think all of us know that the road to hell has been paved with lots of good intentions over time. And so, here, what we're saying is, please, give us a clear project plan or sub-project plan that would be part of Phase 2, but would be clearly identified before we vote on the warrant, using the various newspapers, website, and other ways of informing the community, that this is a commitment that the board is planning to make, so that we all feel that a solution to this particular question can be resolved, and that you will invite town input, so that you get the right kind of information from the community, and also look out to the communities where this has been done and funded, and there's a multitude of ways different communities have dealt with this. So, what we're looking for is what are they, what choices might we have, and how might we best fit it so that it works for our particular community?
Great. Thank you. Thank you for your research and comments. This was brought forward by Julie, as well as Angelo, and Chris has already started to work on this, and it is in a later part of our agenda.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, Mr. Chairman, just in light of folks being here tonight, instead of sitting through the entire, I mean, if the board wants me to have, you know, that discussion now, I was going to bring it up under Town Administrative Reports, but I can give you a preliminary for what I found.
You can do the preliminary, but I will have to hold questions until the end of the meeting when it's on the agenda. But if you want to go ahead and give a overview of what you've already done without questions afterwards, then I'm going to open it back up to the rest of the.
I don't know if anyone else wanted to speak first, or if they want to?
Yeah, why don't we finish up public comment and announcement? Cindy?
On a lighter note, we have the toast of Harwich coming up on Friday, May 5th. Just wanted to let everyone know, we have extended some hours out of the chamber, four tickets this Thursday and Friday until 6:00 PM, and then Sunday, 11 to 4:00. So, if anyone's still looking for your tickets, there are some available.
Thank you. Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, Deputy Fire Chief, Dave LeBlanc. I stand here tonight just to relay some information to you guys briefly to the board and to the citizens. We've had a crazy couple of weeks, I don't know what it is, full moon, whatever it is, but over the last, since a week ago Friday, about 140 calls in the department, two building fires, back-to-back, which is unusual, a couple of car fires, and about a half a dozen accidents, of which the last one Scott and I just cleared 20 minutes ago on Route 137, which involved a rollover truck. One of the accidents was a serious injury with an extrication, probably a 40-minute extrication, ended up with a med flight of the individual. But that's not why I stand here. I stand here with some good news. Immediately following that accident, as we were clearing, we had a reported house fire on Standage Wood Circle. We were kind of short-staffed in the initial response to it because we had had the car accident. I was the first to arrive, and we had reported people in the building. Lieutenant Tilslie, Captain Thornton, firefighter Clark immediately went inside, searched the building, and rescued the family dog. Everybody else was out of the house, they were at a wedding reception, but they pulled the family dog Sasha the pit bull out. And because of that, the fire department is receiving a compassionate fire department award from PETA. So, that will be forthcoming, but we wanted to share that information with the board and the citizens. It's nice when someone takes the time to recognize what we do, and we certainly all love what we do and appreciate the opportunity to serve the community. So, I just wanted to share that. And I bring Lieutenant Tilslie up, just to speak briefly about this weekend's events, which he was a part of.
Good evening, thanks for having me. So, had the pleasure of representing the town of Harwich this weekend at a hockey tournament in Marlboro. It was called the Tournament of Heroes. It was all police, fire, military, and EMS, 52 teams, and, you know, FDNY, Boston Fire, Cambridge Fire, and so we had Little Harwich Fire there, and it was pretty exciting to be a part of. One of the teams we played was actually from Dayton, Ohio, so traveled quite a ways. Happy to report, we did pretty well. We did lose in the finals, 1-0, to the Federal Bureau of ATF.
Bringers.
But you know, you might say, what does it matter, a hockey tournament? But we had 10 members of the Harwich Fire Department on this team. We had a couple from neighboring fire departments. But it's a special bond in a service that really requires close relationships, camaraderie. It's really a special thing to have 10 members and go away and participate in something like that, and so, just wanted to share the good news with you.
Thank you, Scott.
Good evening.
Thank you. Thank you for all you're doing. Congratulations on the award. Thank you. Next up?
Good evening. Hi. My name's Audrey Greenway. I'm, I live at 69 Lovers Lane, and I am a business owner in town and property owner, resident. And I'm here tonight to sort of make a statement on a couple of things regarding the farm at 35 Chatham Road, which has been an ongoing, I know, issue. And I first want to say thank you to the selectmen for assigning us a fabulous liaison, finally. We have somebody who can sort of help us, the neighborhood, through the process. It's been a really difficult year with what's been happening back there with the expansion of that property. You know, there are a lot of concerns for the neighborhood and for the butters and for the environment, and, you know, we're in a really highly sensitive environmental area there. And I'm happy to say that there has been some movement, I think really, thanks to Chris for getting involved and helping us sort of, you know, work through this process a little bit, but there needs to be a lot more movement. And so, I was glad to see that the Agricultural Commission is on the agenda tonight, so I'm looking forward to hearing what you folks have to say about that. And my biggest concern right now, we, you know, a lot of the conservation issues have been sort of dealt with, you know, those folks have worked like diligently with us and to sort of make things start to happen there, and they are starting to happen. So, the mediation will start to occur soon on the property, and the plantings will, and the choir rolls, and the buffer zone, and all of that. However, the big issue right now, I think, is the manure pile that's the size of a house, literally, no exaggeration. Be happy to have you all over to my house so you can see it and smell it. And that's the concern, actually, right now, is that it's, 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 I know that everyone is saying, well, we're waiting to see if the NRCS gives the farmer a farm plan, and then the NRCS says, well, we're waiting to see if the Conservation Commission gives them an agricultural exemption, and then it's, oh, well, we're waiting for the state because the farmers now appealed that decision to, for their determination. That's all great, you know, but that manure pile, it's been a year that he's unmasking this pile, and it is the size of a house. That is no exaggeration. And it is leaching. It is sitting on the 100-foot line, and it's going directly into the bogs. And, you know, I requested that the water be tested because we have a green sheen now on the bogs, and luckily, that was done, and, you know, they're saying, you know, Board of Health came back and said, well, there are no nitrates and no nitrogen, but there's excessive fecal coliform in the water, and, but that that's not an issue. Well, I think it is an issue. And I think that, you know, I'm not a scientist, I'm not an environmentalist, I'm not a lawyer, I'm just a girl trying to make it in this world, and I'm trying to protect the land back there, and I'm trying to protect, you know, my neighborhood. I mean, it's really, it's huge. If you folks haven't been out to the site, I really encourage you to come out. Come on over to my house, I'll walk you over there. We're on my property, it's, you know, we can do that, so you can see it with your own eyes, because it's pretty shocking. And I'm not against farming. I come from generations of farmers, generations of farmers. I just want to see it done right, you know, and I want to see our land protected, and I want to see that we are being good stewards of the water, and, you know, here we are, like about to approach town meeting in what, two weeks or something? And, and, yeah, and, you know, we want to pass a $30 million wastewater management plan in this town, and we can't clean up the doodoo that's in our own backyard that's going directly into the water. So, it's, it's been really frustrating, and I know that he's not permitted for all these things. However, we have a Board of Health in this town who regulates, you know, until, I just don't understand why we have to wait until all these other people who are not involved in our town give their determination. We can be doing something now to get an action plan going to move forward, and then if, you know, if he does get his exemption, and he does get an NRCS plan, and he does become a commercial farm, great. Then he follows those regulations. But in the meantime, we, you know, we, it's up to us to take care of the situation, and it's been a year. So, I don't think that, you know, standing here today asking for help is, you know, is inappropriate because, because we've been asking for help for a year and nothing's happening, except, like I said, finally, there's been some movement in conservation, and Chris has been, you know, a great asset to be our liaison. But I think moving forward, you know, if we're going to have farming in our community, which is, again, I'm certainly not against farming, I think it's great, this particular case is going to set the standard for everybody else. And so, if we allow this to happen, why can't, you know, Joe Smith down the street, who has two acres of land, do the same thing with, you know, and then after it's done, say, oops, well, I thought I was exempt? Well, you're not, not yet. So, until he is, until, until, you know, the determinations are all said and done, I feel that, you know, that property should be following and be regulated just like the rest of us in this room.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to defer to Chris Clark for a couple of comments that he's going to make on what you said, but I'm not going to open this up for discussion because it's not on the agenda. But thank you. Chris?
Yeah, I just want, Mr. Chairman, as Audrey pointed out, I have kind of come to this to start to look into it, and I just want to make a couple of comments. Some of this is in litigation, so I have to be careful what I say. I just want to kind of put that out there as well. One of the things that I have learned that when you're dealing with a farm, there are right-to-farm rules, that there are local guidelines, state guidelines, and federal guidelines. I wish I could say that they were more clear. They're not always clear, I'll just put it that way. I just want the board to know that there's different action items that have already been taken, and this is not to close down any farm. We just, and I said this to the neighbors, and I said this to the property owner, that there are rules and regulations, and as long as those rules and regulations are followed and complied with, there's no issue, but they need to be followed and complied with. So, with that being said, I did send a letter to the Farm Bureau folks to put them that if they have a farm plan, they did submit a farm plan, it's been under review, they got some comments back. I informed them that they are not in, or they are in violation of local CONCOM rules and regs, and that that was something of concern to the town, and that any application or continuing that application, that the town, I've requested on behalf of the town that they be notified and an opportunity to comment to see if the farm is going to be in compliance with different issues. So, we will, I put that letter out already, I will make that available to the board. I did that just before I went away on vacation, or had vacation. On CONCOM, that is an active enforcement. There are numerous enforcement orders that are out there. So, we are progressively taking action. I did go out during a site inspection with DEP. It was clearly obvious that there was a violation, clearly obvious. So, DEP's aware of it, we're aware of it, and there is enforcement action to commence. They had, they were issued a stop-work order, and they did stop work. They have not done additional work, to my knowledge, above and beyond what they were ordered to stop. So, now this is a remediation piece. On the Board of Health, there was a organizationally, a theory that we should wait for CONCOM to go first. I didn't agree with that, and I asked all enforcement agencies to look at the issue as standalone in their area of discipline. So, on the Board of Health, they did study the water. Fecal coliform is an item that's in every part of the environment, and really what triggers is what is the level? Is it a level that's normal to the background? Is it a level that's exceptionally high? In talking to the Board of Health, we could not make that clear determination. There are other enforcement elements, though, that the Board of Health will be engaged in, such as the public nuisance of having a large pile of manure. That, I think, is fairly definitive. The Building Department and Animal Control have also been engaged. There were two loose cows, I guess, last week.
They caught them.
They have been secured and returned, I think in part due to some of the efforts. They were caught at the golf course, so due to some of our golf course folks did, our staff, not the golfers thankfully, did help in that. So, I just want to make sure, especially, you know, that people think that, you know, the town's not being responsible, you know. I think that we are more engaged, and I apologize that it's taken us a while to get to where we are, but I think I have the organization fully engaged, and we will treat that property owner fairly in light of what legally they're entitled to do.
Sorry.
I didn't say anything. She's doing a disclaimer. I did not go to law school, so.
Sorry.
But just to provide an update to the board, that a lot of action has been taken, a lot of enforcement action is being taken. There are things that are being done on the site that are appropriate to farming, too, and I think that that's something that we have to be respectful of.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you for the update. Anyone else for public comment and announcement?
Good evening. For the record, Craig Chadwick. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, town administrative staff, and members of the public. As I mentioned, I'm Craig Chadwick, and I am here representing the Harwich Fire Station Number 2 Rehab and Renovation Committee, and I'd like to announce that the- As I mentioned, I'm Craig Chadwick, and I am here representing the Harwich Fire Station Number Two Rehab and Renovation Committee. And I'd like to announce that the committee is sponsoring an open house at Fire Station Two this Saturday, April 29th, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon. Committee members will be on-site to provide a walkthrough tour of the station, answer any questions that anyone might have, and we also plan to display the conceptual plans that the committee developed two or three months ago that's leading to the Warren article at town meeting.
Great.
That is correct, I'm sorry. Route 39 and 137.
Thank you. And, and again, that was Saturday, the 29th, 10:00 to noon.
Saturday, the 29th, 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else for public comment and announcement? Okay, Chris, we're gonna bring forward Town Administrator's Report E: Wastewater Financing for Taxpayers.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity. We did get the final kind of legal opinion this afternoon, so we, we just got it recently. And what I will try to do is to, to kind of paraphrase, he doesn't have the three options in here, he has primarily two options that I, I think I would consider as, as main options. But I think it's something for the board to, to give some consideration to. The, the first option was actually from the engineer and was included in Larry Ballantyne's comments, that one option that would be available to the board would be to actually include in the construction cost an allocation towards the connection to go directly to the home. So that would have a, an additional cost, obviously, that would have to be financed, that would become part of the town's overall project, and I think that at least from the standpoint that that is an option that the board may want to consider. I think David Young, our engineer, had indicated that if there was a blanket, I think he got this from other towns, a $5,000 install fee, a $5,000 allocation, if you would, per home, then that would give some kind of balance. There are going to be some homes that will have a gravity system and maybe fairly cost-effective, and there are others that would have a more, more in-depth necessity, and it would have to have some kind of pump chamber. So there, there is a, a little bit of a, a risk to that. The, the second option, and I think this goes to, to really it's kind of the, the heart of the question, I do believe that we do have two perfectly valid legal mechanisms that the town can pursue relevant to having people have the ability to finance the, the connection through the, through the town as opposed to through a private bank. In, in terms of that, just simply, I'll, I'll put these down, that there could be a, an assessment of betterment, and there is a process that needs to be followed for assessment of betterments. Most likely, what we would have to do is to, to come up with a, a formula for, it has to have a equitable treatment on betterment, so it would be the lineal feat, so if somebody had a 300-foot deep connection, then it would be charged on a per-foot basis versus somebody that has a 30 or 40-foot connection from the street. So there would be some element of equity. The, also the element of equity in that would be if someone had to have a pump station or a small grinder pump installed on the property versus someone that did not. So the, the Betterment Assessment Formula would have to have some of those elements included in that. From a financing perspective, people would have to acknowledge that they were interested in having this, so it, it would have to be something that individuals would have to make sure that they indicated that they had an interest in this. And they could finance that over, they could pay it all upfront, or they could finance it over 20 years, and the options would be for the town to do a 5%, and, and this is in statute, so this is the way the statute is worded, a 5% interest over that 20 years, or they could elect to have the town pay up to 2% above the rate of interest that the town would charge. So that would be one option, if, just to simplify this, would be a, a Betterment Assessment specifically just on the connection piece. So basically from, we're talking about from the road to the, to the home itself. The other option that he lays out here and is available is a loan program. So we currently have, I believe we have a version of this in which people that want to replace their septic systems could approach the town, and I believe the county has a similar system where they could do a loan. In that loan, it's the same, the same criteria, so it would be up to 20 years, it could be financed at 5% or at the town rate up to 2% above that. So that is probably the, the third option that is available. That has a little bit of complexity to it. If we were to finance through the state revolving loan fund, they have a very specific criteria that we would have to follow, so it would be income-specific, so not everybody would necessarily be eligible to go through that. And there are other criteria that we would have to meet with DEP to, to get a, DEP being Department of Environmental Protection, to go through that, and with the SRF folks, state revolving loan fund folks, to see what the additional steps are. But there are a program that would be included in the state revolving loan. If we were to finance that with our own borrowing, basically design our own program, that would be something that conceivably we could set up through the regulations that the board has. We could also do potentially the regulations for the assessment of the betterment to let people know what the assessment of the betterment would be. I do think, one thing, and I just want to kind of make this clear, I know that people want certainty and understanding, and I'm, I'm trying to get some level of certainty and understanding. So I think that by laying out those, those three options, I, I don't think that that's inclusive of every option available, just really the ones that, that make the most sense. But the, the money that's being appropriated this year is, is for the design, and certainly we need to have the design done to get a better sense for how many people would have to have the grinder pumps, how many people could hook up to a, a localized pressure system that the town would be installing within the town right of way to take that. So I, I don't, I don't know, I think concept-wise, we can lay out the concept and give people some, some definiti on the concept, but in terms of the details, it's really going to be determined by the design as to how many people are going to have gravity systems versus how many people would have the, the specific pump stations. I just, you know, the, the one reference that I have is that the town of Chatham, which I think is five or six years into their sewer program, you know, did opt to not go down the road of providing any assistance. And, and I know that I was asked, I think by board members and by members of the, the community, to come up with options, but, you know, initially I thought, well, maybe that's a little bit cold on, on Chatham's part, but there is a little bit of logic in, in their approach from the perspective of anytime the town does something, we have to pay prevailing wage. So we have a 20 to 30% markup that we have to cover by law. Any new improvements to a, a system, we need to, to pay prevailing wage. So it is going to be a little bit more costly for the town to do some of this, to do some of this work. And then secondly, I think that they, in, in terms of Chatham, they haven't had as much of an issue getting loans directly and, and putting those loans to the, to the residents, being able to go privately, take out like a home equity type, type of loan. So in, in their case, they have found, and at least from the, the email correspondence I saw, there really wasn't a lot of requests for the town, Chatham, to consider this. So I think it's important that the board at least know that, and I, I'm sure there's other towns where there, there are a greater level of need. I always think in, in these circumstances, it's my responsibility to try to present at least options to the community and to certainly to the board. And I think that those three options that I, I laid out, each one, I think, is a legally valid option. Each one is going to have its own pros and cons in, in terms of that. I don't know if tonight, it's worthwhile to go through all those, but at least want to kind of lay out that there, there are options that are available, and I think that those options make some sense, and perhaps the board would want to consider which way you would like to lean in terms of those options so we could start to do some additional legwork. But again, the, the key point to tonight, and we are a week away from town meeting, that we, we should lay out that there are options available. Once the design is done, we can hone in on what those potential costs would be for homeowners in, in terms of that. But I think that some of this is going to be driven by design, by the design of the, the system, and that we would, this would necessitate us coming back most likely as part of either the article for the construction dollars or a separate article for creation of a, a bylaw that lays this out. And I think it is an important decision because this is phase two of an eight-phase program. So it would be my suggestion, however we treat people today, that someone that's in phase seven or phase eight has a reasonable expectation that they're going to be treated in an equitable manner.
Thank you, Chris. Peter, would you like to add to that?
We're gonna talk about this later, or?
May as well talk about it.
Just in general, I would say that the devil is in the details, and this next phase for 600 houses, you're exactly right, Chris, that the, the engineering team will, will put together what the details are of connecting with each individual house. So, you know, one house may be 40 feet from the street, one house may be 400 feet from the street, and obviously those costs vary greatly. But keep in mind that, that the design of that system is going to take two years. We're hoping to accelerate the first year so we can get construction funding approved at next year's annual town meeting, 2018 annual town meeting. And then it would take at least a year to start building out the system. So our estimations are the first flow to Chatham, and we got the interconnect with the Chatham system and whatnot, would be 2021. So there is time to deal with this, I guess, is, is the point. I think we've, we've talked all along about, you know, these costs obviously are a shock to people, and they need to be addressed. You know, I, I think everybody has an interest in trying to figure this out going forward. I would not want to see us lock ourselves in tonight to some funding source that we may find out we needed in three or four years that we made a mistake, you know. I, I think the board can and would, you know, commit to, okay, we obviously know we need to address this topic, and, and, you know, work on that, certainly for the next year, and then come back with something more solid. But there are opportunities out there, there's no free money. I mean, it just isn't, it isn't. But a better on program, if you don't know what it is, like, you know, when some, when there's a private road that wants to convert and have their, their street paved because it's an absolute mess, there is a system in place where, you know, the residents of that road take a vote, and if a certain percentage of them approve the betterment process, then the road is constructed. And over a period, I think it's 20 years as well, that the town would, on everybody's tax bill on that road, would over a 20-year period of time recover that money. So in other words, the taxpayers, I'm shelling out, say in that case, $15,000 to pave their road each, they're paying it out through the tax system over time. So those mechanisms, you know, they're out there, betterments are done frequently all the time, but I think it's wise to just recognize the fact we need help in this area, we, I mean, everybody. And the other thing, just to point out is, you know, we're talking about, talking about searing approximately 50% of the houses in Harwich, so when you look at the data and whatnot, it's like 50% of that, but if it's your house, it's the only house that counts, right? I mean, I get it, you know, I get it. So I, I think we just need some time, but I, you know, I thank you for bringing this, you know, not, I won't necessarily say to our attention, but the urgency of it certainly to our attention. And, you know, I hate to, from a politician's standpoint, say, "Trust us," but, you know, that's, that's sort of the way this, you know, the way this is as it goes forward, because we need to know more details, quite frankly, about designing the system.
I do have a question, if I may. Yep, jump back up to the microphone, please.
That's the engineering firm that you're using has got a fairly strong track record of doing these kinds of projects throughout the state. We were a little surprised that, that, the kind of information that we were looking for was not provided to the committee, perhaps the committee didn't ask for it, or they didn't think that it was appropriate within the phase of the project. But for us to say, with this kind of property that maybe got a, a semi, a kind of an embankment ranch kind of thing versus one that's up on a hill versus one that's down a hole, are there some trends that they have seen over the 5, 10, or 15 communities that they've served so that we at least have some benchmarks to start with? Because when you don't know when you don't know, you're not even quite sure what are the right questions to be asking. And I think that the town certainly has a limited number of resources to bring to bear on any of these projects. And so to the degree that if you wanted to invite a study group of some sort to participate in helping with this, I don't think that you'd find people objecting, they're probably people that would step forward. But it, it just strikes me that this engineering firm probably has data that we perhaps ought to look at related to what I call benchmarks for what has been done in other communities that, beyond Chatham. I know that they've used Chatham, Chatham as the comparison, but if they've done work in Marlboro, if they've done work in other places throughout the state, we know that the topography is going to be somewhat similar, and maybe we could use some of that to help us even form the questions to be asking around what funding has worked more successfully for towns that have had these projects in place for five or 10 years. And that would educate us, and I think that it behooves the engineering company to educate their customer. And so perhaps we ought to be requesting that of them.
Thank you. Peter?
I'd just point out, you know, since you mentioned Chatham, I just want to be clear, CDM Smith, who's our consulting engineering firm, is not involved with Chatham.
I see.
It's only, only is our representative in the discussions, you know, representing Harwich, not, Chatham has their own, Weston and Sampson, I think, you know, did their system, if you will. The other reason I, and I wasn't at that meeting unfortunately, but the other reason David, David Young, who's our guy, if you will, our, you know, our point person with CDM Smith and the principal on the, on the project, may not have been that forthcoming on some of the cost or details. Some of the costs depend on what's going on in your neighborhood. In other words, even if your neighbor has a 40-foot connection, you have a 400-foot one, if the main in the street is a forced main as opposed to a gravity system, it does, it does affect what the cost is. So without going through the engineering of the entire collection system and knowing what the details are as you feed into it, it's a little more complicated than that. That's, that's all I'm saying. I'm not, you know, I'm not trying to defend them, but it, it is a complicated thing. I think of sewer just being, boy, it's just, should be pretty simple, but it's more complicated than we ever imagined, so.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. My name is Bob Thomas, and I'm on Northeast Drive, and I am the president of the Homeowners Association in East Wind. So I speak on behalf of many of us. But I think the important thing here, I think most of us are certainly in favor of and not opposed to sewers. The issue is how do they get funded on an individual basis? And I think that the items that you brought up, Chris, were very valuable, and Peter, I think your, your explanation of timeline and so on and so forth are equally valuable. I think the more important, or the most important thing here as we go forward, especially being a week away from town meeting, is that the rest of the town understands that you're working, I mean, it's in, it, it's sort of a kudo for the board to make sure that everyone knows that you're working on some sort of a solution. And I appreciate the fact that you can't now, I mean, there's no way you can offer to the rest of the town's people what that solution's going to be. But I think if we can at least tell people that we're working on various ways that might be amenable to the town and to homeowners as to how they pay for this, I think they'll feel more comfortable with it. And I think if, if, if nothing else, if we can make people feel more comfortable with how they're going to pay for this, and not to put words in Barbara's mouth, but I, I think that's the gist of this whole thing. Because it's, it's really on an individual basis, as you point, if it's your, if it's your house, how am I going to pay for this? And as long as we can make people understand that there is a, you know, a light at the end of the tunnel, whatever that may be, solution-wise, I think that's in all of our best interests, so just wanted to add that.
Thank you. Peter?
Could I just add one little minor point, and that is, in our negotiations with Chatham on the, what's called the intermunicipal agreement, using their treatment facility, one of the, one of the issues that came up was when your system, my system, whatever, is abandoned, because it needs to be abandoned at some point, it needs to be pumped out, and it needs to be basically crushed and filled in. That's part of the process, that's part of what this cost is. But Chatham agreed for those systems where they're now going to connect to the sewer collection system, which will go into Chatham, that they will accept that pumped-out septicage. And that is a cost, by the way, you know, to dispose of that. So it, it might not sound too significant, but they will do that, and it will be, it will be taken to Chatham and dealt with at the plant.
Thank you, Peter. Thank you, Peter. Angela?
Just two comments. I know your comment was about senior citizens needing this. I also think there are a lot of young people with children that also need it, so I think we need to be broad in the approach, which is what we've been talking about, not just limited. And I think one other thing I'd like us to check out, you mentioned the payment system that we have, we were forced to work in. When we dredged Allen Harbor, we had a number of the homeowners participate in that operation, and they were able to pay regular costs and lose the 30% or 40% by having them, for example, pull their own pilings, rather than pay our 150 bucks, they were paying $70 for it. So if we, when you look through this, if indeed the homeowner actually contracts with the pipe layer for their house, pays that, and then shows up here and says, here's the bill, and we cover that and turn it into a loan, if we can save the 30%, 40%, we're both saving money. So I think, I think we need to look at that piece. And I don't know what the words are in that particular...
Yeah, just to that point, since I think it's a great opportunity to bring this up. Under statute, it does allow for the homeowner to have four options for financing the connection, paying a private contractor to make the connection, basically keeping it separate, you know, what you're referring to, paying the full amount of the connection cost to the town prior to the connection being made by the town, paying the full amount of the betterment assessed by the town, or the fourth, apportioning the betterment over a 20-year period. So they do lay out in the statute that there's four different options.
I think that's a good thing for us to be looking at. I think it would be a good thing for us also to say, we're not going to try and make money as a town on the interest rate charged. I think we just transfer the interest rate that we have, and that we work at keeping it down. You know, so I think we, there are those kinds of things, so people know what group of people can get these funds, and what the attitude is, I think is important.
Janelle, what do you think? Julie?
No.
Thank you for the questions, and we are working on it. For those that came in late, we had a, under public comment announcement, some questions about the financial impact on households. Later in the agenda, under Town Administrator's Report, we had some of the answers to those, so we took that out of order. Moving on, can I get a motion on the consent agenda, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda. A, approve the minutes from April 3, 2017, regular session. B, approve Chapter 90 project request for guardrail replacement. C, authorize town administrator a signatory on Chapter 90 contract documents. D, approve 2017 junk dealer license renewals. E, approve HMEA union contract. No, we're not doing that.
Yeah, we're gonna take that one off.
We moved that. Strike that. F, approve memorandum of understanding with Elder Services of Cape Cod. G, approve application for common victual license for ten yen. And H, accept resignation of Amy Harris from the Housing Committee.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, minus E, approve HMEA union contract. That was in our executive session tonight, we made no decision on that. Any discussion?
I'd just like to make a comment, if I could. We have a group of 10 people who are interested in a particular subject. We've just discussed the subject, and now we've gone into something else. I think what the issue is, we didn't have this discussion on our agenda as something that we can discuss and vote, so we really can't do that. What I think we will probably do is have, before town meeting on Monday, probably a half hour before, have a discussion where we vote one or two of these things. I just say that because there may be nine people who would like to take me home with them, you know, so I can go also. But, you know, but we're gonna go on to the rest of the agenda. That's all I wanted to point out.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Yes.
I just want to be clear about the memorandum of understanding. Maybe Carolyn, you could clarify this with Elder Services. Does that take away time for our town chef to be in the kitchen, with Meals on Wheels being there Monday through Friday?
No, they share. I live with them. Can I go with them? [laughter]
Only you can take me.
Answer the question.
Kidding. No, they actually share the kitchen, and it works out really well.
Okay.
They've been doing it for several years now.
Great, thanks.
Any other discussion?
I'm live.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Moving on to old business, potential disbanding of Architectural Advisory Committee. This was before us months ago. We delayed the decision in hopes to maybe rewrite a new charge. Janelle is their liaison and has reached out to them. There is no new charge. This is a strictly advisory board that has now, the work is duplicated by planning, correct, Charlene?
Yes.
So what is the board's, do we, do we want to keep this committee active and have them continue to pick up packets and submit work that isn't really looked at, or temporarily disband the committee?
Mr. Chair, I move that we disband the Architectural Advisory Committee until further notice.
I second that.
So it moved and seconded to temporarily disband the Architectural Advisory Committee. Discussion, Chris?
Yeah, I just, if this was formed by bylaw, then we would have to go in and you could, you know, if it's basically inert because it doesn't have adequate number of members or what have you, then it's probably fine to take, the intent would be to disband. But I think formally, we'd have to just strike it from the bylaws for next town meeting. And you may want to just make that, that point clear in the, in the motion.
Okay. Angela?
Can I just make a suggestion?
Sure.
I don't see anybody here from that committee, have we told them that this was on the agenda and that this was going to happen, and invite them to come make some comments? Because in the past, that's what they have, and...
I think we've already done that step. This has been on the agenda now three times. And the last time, yeah, and then we met with the chair of the Architectural Advisory Committee, Charlene and I. So I'd say, I'd say we've done that. Didn't we determine that this had already been changed at town meeting? Do we have to go back?
I can't remember.
Yeah, I can't either.
Sorry.
So we'll have to, we'll look into that. Go ahead.
There's an article, Article 11 from Special Town Meeting, October 2, 1984, was an amended article that basically created the committee. So I don't know when the bylaw would have been created. If it was before that, then this would supersede it.
I think that the way, I'm gonna take a stab at this, again, I didn't go to law school. But if you're, if it's an entity that's created by the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Selectmen would have the authority to dissolve it. If it's an entity created by town meeting, then town meeting would be the entity that would have to dissolve it, I think simplistically put. But I think you can certainly take the step of ruling that it's inert and not in operation until such time as the paperwork can be done to nullify that article when it was voted originally.
Okay. You'll look into that piece of it, Chris?
Yes, I'll get a better legal opinion than mine.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Abstained.
I'm just opposed to that, they haven't given a chance to talk about it, that's all.
But I'm...
So what was your vote?
Opposed.
Four one.
Thank you. Next up is the Agricultural Commission. This is similar to the Architectural Advisory. We brought this about a month ago, where we took control of the Agricultural Commission in absence of one, and Chris was then appointed the liaison to what you heard earlier about the farm. We did send out a letter on March 14, 2017, to all of the members of the Agricultural Commission, which we did hear back from two. And Brent Hemian is one, and Wayne Coulson is the other. The other four did not respond. So we have two members of the Ag Commission that want to stay on the Ag Commission, and we would need to vote to terminate the other four from the committee so we could re-advertise and try and fill that committee. Discussion? Peter?
So I think what you're saying is you have two members who at least appear to want to be active, and the rest are non-responsive.
Correct.
I would take that to mean they've given up on it or something.
Correct.
Whether that was lack of business, or lack of activity, or whatever. I think, you know, given the current situation we have, I think having an Agricultural Commission makes sense. And if you've got members who are appointed who are not showing up, not performing their duties, or whatever, then I think it's all right to, you know, suspend them, if you will, or however you want to describe it, and then re-advertise for them.
Right. That's what I'm looking for.
That's your motion, I'd second it.
That's my motion.
Okay, so it moved and seconded to remove four members that didn't reply to the March 17, March 2017 letter, and post vacancies for four members of the Agricultural Commission. Any discussion?
Yep.
Janelle?
Just looking over the minutes from the previous time we spoke about this, it appears that many of those terms end June 30. So I would actually propose that we do not advertise in the next month for a term that's only going to be a month, that we just wait until fiscal year 18 to reassemble the commission.
Discussion on that? Chris?
Well, just thinking about it, Mr. Chairman, you know, we're coming up on two months from the end, so if we were to advertise and ask for applications by, you know, June 1, then you'd almost be lining them up to get them ready to go for July 1.
We can just delay the appointment. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next up is the future use of the Alborough House and failed CPC article. I really just put this on there for discussion. The Alborough House has been a topic of conversation for the two and a half years that I've been on the board. And kind of just get the board's sense of where we want to go with this. Do we want to, I mean, the CPC article was to fund a study of what the building needs would be. Any thoughts, comments, Julie?
Yeah, I think, because we had talked about this a while ago, and we talked about possibly, you know, making some improvements there, and I think we, you know, tabled that because we didn't want to move forward with that at this point. I also think we talked about storage, and we tabled that. So I'm just wondering if we can, can look at that more closely and see, what is, what is the need for it? And do we have alternative place that we could house those people? Yeah, I'm not sure, but I think we should look closer at it, because if there is some other way to meet that need of where they're housed, it gives us another asset that could possibly be sold and maybe defray the cost of wastewater or whatever.
Chris, there's only one employee in there now, right? Is there only one room rented, or...
Yeah, we have, the facility has one town employee, and then I believe we have two rental spaces or people that use it for temporary space. All those license agreements allow for termination within 30 days, so we have flexibility.
Thank you.
I would, Mr. Chairman, just because people are probably wondering, why are we putting an addition on the building at the same time having a discussion? And I think it does at least make sense to lay out that the, there was a request made to CPC, I guess, last year, prior to town meeting, and then ultimately voted at town meeting for, I think, just over $18,000 to put a handicapped access on. We are putting that handicapped access in, in accordance with that, that vote that was voted by CPC and then subsequently voted by town meeting. Mr. Chairman, you alluded to, we had put in an application this year with CPC for $12,000 to do a comprehensive review of the building, to see what the building needs would be if we were to maintain it in our inventory and bring it up to a standard in which it would last for the life of the building, let's say 30 years or 40 years, whatever, whatever a useful life of a building would be. And that application was actually turned down. So that, in my opinion, that would have been a helpful step forward to at least see what the value of that building would be, whether the value is for the town or for someone that was interested in potentially buying it and preserving it. That would have been a valuable document to have, but that wasn't, that wasn't voted.
Thank you, Chris. Peter, any comments?
None. Personally, I just think we lost an opportunity when we decided not to let the wastewater people occupy the first floor and use it as an information center for wastewater. You know, here's an example tonight of people with questions and concerns and whatnot, that would have been a repository where they could have gone and learned something. So I also, I also think that what was going on before about potentially putting a town in engineering there made sense to me, but obviously this board didn't, so you guys can deal with it in the future.
Thank you. Janelle?
Hmm. I don't know what to say. I've, since I've come on the board, I also have thought we should sell the building. It's in disrepair, although there were efforts to revitalize it from the outside as far as the appearance. It's in disrepair, it's going to cost us more money than it brings in if we've only got a couple of tenants at $200 a month, month to month. I understand the need for Sheila House to have a private place for her counseling, which is also accessible. She, a lot of her clients are students from Monomoy, so it's very easy for them to get to her. So I get that. But I think ultimately, it is, I agree with Julie, maybe it's something that could help offset, if we sell it, offset some of the costs that are coming down the pike. It doesn't even have internet, so...
Angela?
I think it's another one of our buildings that we have no use for, and try and invent use for, and end up spending a bundle of money on something that might be fun rather than needed. If we have a real use for the building, then I think we should fix it and use it. If we don't have a real use for the building, then the question is, is it, do we get rid of it? That's not an easy question to answer with that particular building because of its location. But there are other buildings, like particularly the fire station on Bank Street that is just...
Harbor Masters now, yeah.
Harbor Masters thing, it's just typical. And down in the other direction, we have the West Harwich Schoolhouse, that's then another one of the same kinds of things, although that one's easier because it hasn't been handled a lot for the next, well, a years.
Thank you. Chris, absent the CPC money, is there ability from Sean Libby Maintenance to do some sort of, no?
Yeah, we went down that road, and he didn't feel comfortable that he would be able to do a comprehensive enough evaluation to be able to render a decision on the long-term stability of the building.
Can we look into what it will, what it will cost us and see if we can put together a study for that building?
$12,000.
That's the exact quote. Can we find, that money's not available anywhere, correct?
That's a different question. I mean, I could look, you know, obviously we could go for a reserve fund transfer or something of that nature, just to, I know, sorry, he's in the, he happens to be in the room. So there are, there are other potential funding sources beyond, beyond CPC. But I guess if that's something the board wants me to pursue, I mean, I could certainly do that after town meeting, please.
I know it's been talked about a lot longer than I've been on the board, so I mean, I think at some point, we need to stop talking about the building and do something with the building. So question number one, I guess, would be to approach Finance Committee and see, or see if you can find the money someplace. That would be one. And then where would we put the tenant that's in there now, the department head that's in there?
Yeah, one of the things, too, Mr. Chairman, is that the lot lines, when the two lots were originally designed, I think one of the lot lines actually, the Alborough House isn't just a postage stamp, it actually has almost the majority of our parking lot, and I believe even a section of this building may be technically in that parcel.
You back up here on the Albro...
Yeah, the planning board, I'm sure, would be happy to change the line.
I think Angelo and Julie, if you back up, you're technically in Albro property.
Then we don't have to deal with you.
So, I mean, one of the things that maybe we should do is have, you know, maybe a land use attorney, a copeman, kind of look at it and see what our options are, to see if we can parcel that off or redesignate the lines. I don't know the grandfathering, I'm just not as familiar with that.
Planning board should be able to deal with that.
But we can get...
Charlene has a lot of answers, too. And then the question, I guess, on the department head, that would be something else to explore where the department head would be.
One of the things, and I don't normally say this too often, but, you know, I get a lot of feedback as I've been in this business a long time, and I think the point about having the counselor be in a spot... the point about having, uh, the, the counselor be in a spot where kids feel comfortable coming there, uh, is, is a point that shouldn't be lost. And, you know, that doesn't mean that we can't find something, but it's going to take a little bit to, to figure out, how do we find a mechanism to, to make sure that we don't, uh, scare kids away from, from getting the help that they need. So, that's something, too, that I think administratively, certainly, we could look at that piece and, and see if there's a, a better answer.
Thank you, Chris.
Mr. Chairman, Richard Wastack in Harwich, and I just had a question of the twelve thousand dollars for an analysis of the building. I was at a home inspection this morning with one of the premier inspectors here on Cape Cod who is licensed, and he's doing a historical building, commercial historic building in East TM. Over three days is going to be the term of his inspection. His cost to do that, I asked him, I said, what do you, what do you charge for a three-day inspection of a commercial historical building? It was four thousand dollars. That's three days for an analysis. So, I, I, I don't know what the twelve thousand entails, is this specific historic, um, inspection of the property, or is it a structural, is it, what type of inspection is it?
I, I think it's all told. So, it, it definitely is structural, uh, you know, the systems in it, the HVAC, um, electrical, I, I think it was a, a comprehensive review.
I, I would suggest that-
Happy to, happy to share that, though. I mean, if there's additional people out there that have an interest in, in quoting on it, I mean-
There are, and it's, a lot of them don't like doing it because it takes two to three days, and these inspectors will do two, normally two inspections a day. But my fellow Realtor, Mr. Thomas in the front row, realizes some of these inspectors are very good at what they do, and I think the numbers are far, far less than you're talking about. And I think it's a heck of a lot easier to find three or four thousand dollars than it is to find twelve thousand dollars from an existing budget. So, I, I would, and I'd be happy to assist, I'm sure Mr. Thomas would, as a fellow Realtor, in putting some names together of people who are qualified licensed inspectors who could do both the historical and a full structural inspection of a property like this.
Thank you, Richard. You know, my, my sense would be to, I've been to a lot of the Housing Committee meetings and following what the Housing Committee's doing, and, and they've been asking for a couple of years now for land or a building or a project. There's been no projects, and, you know, my recommendation would be veterans housing, shared veterans housing, shared disabled housing, or elderly housing there to create some units of housing. Uh, but if we could explore those few things, Chris, and then bring it back again?
Okay.
Thank you.
Jack's up here.
Yeah, he's gone, okay.
Excuse me, Michael?
Angela?
Do, do you think that real estate people would be able to give you a rough idea of what that house or that building might sell for, just the way it is?
Yes. We add that to our report?
I don't think an appraisal would be that expensive, to be honest.
I'm not asking for an appraisal, I'm asking for something else.
Ballpark?
If I were to, if, uh, for up for sale, how much could you get for it?
Seeing head nods from Realtors.
Yeah, I, I-
I'm just throwing it out there.
They, they brought our papers that want us to sign them, too, but that's aside for a point.
Okay, thank you, we'll add-
It just, just, I mean, we could do that, but under procurement law, I mean, if we were to dispose of it, we do need to get a-
Oh, I understand that, I understand that.
Great.
This is just to get an idea of the, the dollars.
Okay, any more questions on that one? Thank you. Next up, old recreation building discussion, discussion of lease and related costs. Um, in reviewing the buildings, the old rec building was another one that came up that I have known nothing about, so I put it on the agenda so the board could be more familiar with the old rec building. Was surprised to find a lease that dates out to two thousand and thirty-four. Um, I was even more surprised to read through the lease and see how many different things in there that the town-
I tried to underline that, I-
Yeah, thank you, Charlene, there was a lot of great underlining. Um, the, uh, what I didn't see in the package was, how much do we receive in rent? Uh, how much to date? What's the insurance cost?
Just ran out of time.
Yeah, thank you. So, if we could get, you know, kind of the financial picture of this building, I would like to see that. Uh, the form, the rent formula includes percentages of programs offered. Um, so there was a, a first rent and then a secondary rent, which included percentages. Um, the insurance cost for the building, because I noticed that we pay the insurance on the building.
No, we don't.
They actually pay the insurance.
They do?
Yeah. The one thing that I think is really a, a kicker in that is there was a list of items that the town, the landlord was expected to do. And, and I know an issue came up when I first started, and I did look into this, I think when Sean was fairly new, too, and I, I don't know if everything that we had committed to doing actually got done, so I think one of the things that we should look at is just, what, what is that to-do list? And make sure that those items have in fact been completed.
And is there any articles with any funding? That was another question, is there left, is there articles, because I know this has come before the town before. Um, under section sixteen A, there was a housing component for an adjacent lot, and that seems to have been topic of conversation, but then dropped. So, is there an adjacent lot there that we could offer potentially to our Housing Committee to build six units or whatever happens to go there?
I believe it's the parking lot that, next to it, that's the, the lot.
For the farmer's market.
In the lease, it was in conjunction.
That's across the street.
Yeah, no, it's definitely across. The people, it looks like there's actually a lot behind the parking lot, is what, from the map that I'm looking at.
If that's where it is, I mean, it's the parking lot in that area.
So, just to add to this packet, Chris, if we could look at that adjacent lot, but it would also be, if there's a potential for housing there in the center, um, certainly something that I would support.
One question.
Janelle?
Um, in the beginning, section E, um, less ease responsibility for ADA compliance. I'm just curious if that has been taken care of. Um, I was under the impression that the second floor was only accessible by the outside staircase.
Yeah, the second floor is not accessible. I, I know I walked through that, there is no elevator.
And yet it says, make necessary modifications and install handicap access to the second floor. This is to be done after or in conjunction with making the second floor egress usable. And that was supposed to be year three, um, two thousand eleven to two thousand twelve.
I noticed that as well.
Thank you. So, we'll look forward to this coming back. Peter, any questions on this?
No, it's going to be expensive when you read through this, and I would have it being twenty-five years. I guess that's as long as they built, but, um, it's a pretty good deal.
Julie, any questions?
Uh, well, the other question I had, related to the other ones already brought up, is do, do we have anybody reviewing, uh, that secondary rent? Is that something that happens on an annual basis?
Yeah, I noticed that they had, uh, audited statements needed to be submitted to get that ten percent, and I'll check with the, the accounting. I believe it has, to be honest, I believe it has, but it's been a while since I looked.
Angela? Moving on to new business. Authorized Chair to Sign Letter of Support and Approve the Open Space and Recreation Plan. Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, I've asked Amy and Ally to come before us tonight and just explain what the Open Space and Recreation Plan is, what's being changed, and what further regulatory hurdles we have.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Yep. So, in your packet tonight, Amy and I put together a summary.
Ally?
Oh, just, oh, sorry.
Give your answer.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so we put together a summary, so I'll just kind of quickly go through it, um, and through the presentation. Discussion, we'll go through it in more detail. Um, so we're going to start with the history and purpose of the Open Space Recreation Plan, the accomplishments, uh, since the two thousand and ten Open Space Recreation Plan update, and the goals of the two thousand and seventeen, so this is the one we're talking about, uh, today, update. Um, and then I'll go through some of the requirements of the state, um, put as conditions upon approval, uh, at the end of the, uh, discussion. So, just to go through kind of the quick history and purpose, so the plan was first adopted in nineteen ninety-eight, and this is the second update. The first update was in two thousand and ten. Um, the purpose of the plan is to lay out a proposal for management of existing town properties, um, and this plan is extremely important because it makes us eligible for grant funding. Uh, so to have this in a, as an approved plan is very important. So, I'll just turn it over to Amy now.
Thank you. So, I'm going to go over the accomplishments since two thousand and ten, as well as the goals of the two thousand and seventeen, um, update, which are very similar to the goals that were in the last one. It's elaborating on them, it's adding a little bit. Pardon me. So, we have accomplished a lot since two thousand and ten. We have, but in conjunction with the Real Estate and Open Space Committee, Planning Department, Conservation Department, created a priority list for new acquisitions, and we have a checklist on how we evaluate these parcels when they do become available to us. We're actually even seeking out parcels that are most important as well. Key part of, um, acquisitions, if it's for open space, is connectivity with other adjacent lands, just an example of one of our criteria. Since two thousand and ten, we've added nine new open space parcels with fifty-seven plus new acres of land. These include the Hall property, um, what we call the Veroki property, which is also on Bell's Neck, and, um, in, in addition, the, uh, we work with the Harwich Conservation Trust, so the forty-nine acres, things like that. We have two new land management plans and a one parcel, it's actually, should be a ten parcel stewardship report, I apologize. We have, we now have a land manage, land management plans for Island Pond Conservation Area, as well as the Bell's Neck Conservation Lands. I consult with these plans, or I review these plans prior to doing actions on our conservation land. We have one for Thompson's Field, um, that was in nineteen ninety-nine, that we're currently working on. And the ten parcel stewardship report is basically a condensed version of activities on ten other smaller parcels, uh, in, on, in the town. The Muddy Creek Bridge was planned for and, and constructed, and we're in the monitoring phase right now. We have a new critical habitat type, which is for the eastern cotton tail, eastern North American cotton tail rabbit in the northwestern part of Harwich, abutting the punk horn. Um, there, the European cotton tail is currently decimating the habitat of, um, and they outcompete the, uh, North American cotton tail. So, we have been designated as habitat for, um, North American cotton tail rabbits. We're also working on making town-owned parcels, um, more ADA accessible as we are revamping buildings, bathrooms, things like that, we're making sure that they are accessible going forward. So, our goals, I'm just going to go through them, and if, if you have questions, I'm more hap, more than happy to elaborate. Um, so goal one, maintain an inventory of existing town-owned property and identify appropriate uses. And within this, update the inventory and maintain a GIS system, identify existing and potential use for parcels. We're actively doing this. Implement land management plans for existing conservation parcels. We're in the process of, we are implementing ones we already have, proposed in the next cycle. I'd like to add Isabel Smith, Monomoy River Woodlands, and the Robbins Pond Conservation Area, to have land management plans. Identify future open space acquisitions, that is the, um, what I was speaking about before, when we evaluate properties, how we rate them. Enhance trail systems with open space, within open space areas. Protection of natural resources and community character through growth management strategies. Goal six, preserve and enhance natural resource, groundwater and surface water, coastal water and adjacent shoreline areas, inland and coastal wetlands and wildlife and plant habitats. Goal seven, management of the handling and disposable, disposal of solid hazardous waste products. Goal eight, preserve and enhance natural and man-made features and resources. And goal nine, preserve and enhance opportunities for passive and active recreation to meet the needs for both residents and visitors.
Thanks, Amy. Um, so in two thousand and fifteen, the plan, um, that was given to you was submitted to, um, the state for review, and we were issued conditional approval on the plan with just a few things that we had to submit, um, to finish the plan. So, that's kind of what we're doing now, we're getting every little last detail together, putting it together and submitting it to the state. But I'll just go, go through some of the things that were requested from the state before they could issue, uh, final approval to us. Um, so, they were concerned mostly, um, with not having enough public input into the plan, um, and to rectify this, we've had a number of public hearings. The last one was just in February, it was a joint meeting between the Conservation Commission and Planning, um, Board. Uh, we did have some comments and feedback, uh, from the public, so that's great, um, and we have included those, um, in the plan for the state to review. Some other things, um, we needed to update some of our maps and include them in the plan, which had been done. We worked with the Cape Cod Commission to have that accomplished. And the last one that I'll mention is letters, um, of review from the Cape Cod Commission, which I've submitted the plan to them, and they're reviewing it currently, and then also from the Board of Selectmen. So, that's why we're here tonight, to request, um, that the Board support the plan and issue a letter, so that we can include it in the packet, send it to the state, um, and hopefully receive final approval, so we can get that grant funding.
Great. Thank you.
Don't, if you have any questions, please.
Perfect. Peter?
Good, thank you.
You're good? Janelle?
I don't have any questions, thanks.
Julie?
I just have a question on the, on the GIS. It, it says, update inventory and maintain GIS, so, go ahead. I, I'm just wondering where we stand on that, because it would be nice to expand that GIS.
Um, we would love to expand in-house, we have some capability with our new software, Asella, um, to do that, but for the, for the most part, we rely on the county and state GIS data layers. We haven't really elaborated too much past that, and I think, I mean, that, that is the goal of making, you know, being able to manage it more in-house, but also to let the public be able to do more on their own as well, to look at our website and, um, look at their property and be able to make some assumptions on their properties based on the GIS capabilities that we have.
We also, just to follow, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Just to follow up with that, in, um, my budget, I worked with the assessors as well, uh, and the Water Department for next year, um, to get new, uh, GIS equipment, so that's more updated than the ones we have now, so hopefully that will-
Okay, that's great, thank you.
Chris?
I just wanted the Board to, uh, the Board had, uh, I think during the budget hearing on Saturday morning, we did meet, uh, we've met with folks from Yarmouth to kind of look at IT, and we are in the process internally of kind of doing a review of where we are with IT and putting together kind of a five-year plan of where do we see, uh, moving into IT, and, and certainly GIS, the, the in-house element would be a, a component of that. So, that is something that is in, is in process.
And I'm just wondering, in regard to that, now, CDM Smith, would they give us a quote on that? Because they maintain a lot of those databases, don't they? CDM Smith, that, they're on-
No, it's more the, it's more the county and the, uh, Water Department through, um, is it Polaris?
I don't know.
I, I can't rem, I can't rem, I can't remember the name of the matter.
Okay, because I've seen CDM Smith noted on various GIS websites as providing the information, so, I'm just saying-
Just not with us as, as part of our GIS provider.
Okay.
Just not, not that element.
Angela?
Uh, just a, a question on, on one of the goals, you say maintain an inventory of existing town-owned property. That's more than just the conservation land, I take it? Or is it not?
No, it is. We have, we do have, I have an open space inventory, um, and open space is more than just, um, land for conservation purposes, it can be recreation, other, other uses. Um, so we, I do have not only, um, electronic database of those, but I actually have four very large binders sitting on my shelves of all the deeds, the restrictions, everything is done by map and parcel. Um, we're beginning to be in the process of making those electronically available, too, when we have the ability to scan everything in. So, we have an active database that we add to.
The, the reason I ask is, is I think I know a couple of, about a couple of parcels that, one sitting by the golf course, that is controlled by the golf course, and another one that's controlled by the Selectmen, that we probably have no use for. And, uh, rather than just letting it sit there and count towards having us need to put its sewers in to cover those parcels-
Yep.
-that we convert it to conservation land if it's appropriate, and that's, you know, format parcels that we can reduce the sewer-ing for, uh, for example. And I don't know if anybody's planning on looking at those, I, I mean, I just give you two that I'm-
Sure.
-aware of, but, uh, I, there might, it might be an approach for somebody to take and save us a considerable amount of money if these, if that's what we want to do with the parcel.
Yeah. Um, I don't want to speak for the Real Estate and Open Space Committee, but, uh, correct me if I'm wrong. But I mean, one of our things that we, one of the things they do is evaluate parcels for their, their u- their current use and what if, if, what if anything they're needed for, and if they're in the right place within, you know, but, if they're conservation, if they're golf, if they're rec. So if there are parcels that are being questioned, we'd be happy to look at them, I'm sure.
The State Open Space Committee. If you would identify those, I was making notes, by the golf course, I think I know which one that is. I'm not sure which one, we, we, as Amy said, and she's been very involved in this, um, quite, quite a bit as to helping us, uh, identify different parcels. So if you could, um, be specific about those parcels, I'd be more than happy to take it back to the committee.
Okay, well, I, I was just after somebody going through all of the parcels we own. If you have a parcel that's sitting next to conservation land.
Yep.
You know, it's probably, okay, that's, that's all I'm suggesting.
More, more so than you might know.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very active.
Chris?
Mr. Chairman, I, I do think, uh, we, we've, uh, with the transition from, uh, Dave Spitz was kind of one of the, the people that was kind of targeted in the organization that was doing a lot of work on this, with his retirement, where we need to transition. I know that Amy's presented in the past, uh, several pieces of property that we need to really vet out. There was a few issues that we needed to just work on, but we'll bring those back.
Yeah.
But to that point, we will definitely, uh, make those recommendations back to the Board.
Yeah.
That's a hint.
Thought that survey was interesting. Thought the survey was interesting, where ninety-five percent of the people who took the survey supported, eighty-five percent strongly supported more acquisition of open space.
Absolutely.
Where is the, uh, Monomoy property, Monomoy River Woodlands?
Isabel Smith, that's off Bay Road, so at the very end of Bay Road.
Muddy Creek?
Much, yeah, the town property there.
No, no, no.
No.
No, it's not really.
Isabel Smith is a separate piece that we own, but it, it pretty, it's pretty connected.
A marini would connect into that. And then just.
Not directly, not directly, they're both on the river. They're both on the river.
Sorry. And then when did you, when we, when did we submit this, and then originally?
It was originally submitted, um, in two thousand fifteen, and we received a letter back to, with the conditions of the state. Um, and we're just trying to fulfill all of them now and get them together and submit them.
Anything else from the Board? Can I get a motion on this?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the Town Hall of Chauvin Space Recreation Plan as presented to us.
Second.
And authorize the Chair to sign?
Authorize the Chair to sign.
Still second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve. Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Good luck.
Next up is the renewal of a mutual cooperation agreement with Barnstable County Home Consortium. Any Board member object to renewal? 'Cause this really is an automatic renewal, so unless there's an objection, can I get a motion on? Uh, we don't, no action required. Chris, do you want anything on this? There's no action required on it, so.
I'm actually, Ally is the Town's representative, uh, to the home. I'm actually a member at large. I know, we don't, no, no, we don't need her, we don't need her. Um, I'm actually a member at large, um, serving the entire Cape. And they provide, um, services through money through the home program for affordable housing projects as they come forward. Um, there's other programs that we assist in funding, um, and to, to make things more affordable for, for folks. It's a good program. We wish there was a lot more money, but unfortunately, there's none.
Well, it looks like they had, they had great stats, sixteen hundred seventy affordable homes or apartments in the region, with another hundred and sixty-eight units underway.
Yep. And there's some wonderful buy-down programs that have been instituted and, and some, uh, first-time home buyer, it's a little bit different program, where they assist people in, um, getting the down payment that they need. They have enough to sustain a mortgage, but they need that little extra oomph for the down payment. So that's another program that they've done.
Great. No action required, so on to C, stabilization fund balance and investment status. I put this on, Chris, I believe you had already answered this to Norrie Donahue from the Finance Committee, who asked the question at our last meeting, what the balance was and where the money, when it got allocated to the fund. Chris?
Yes, I, I definitely appreciate the opportunity. I, I was at the Finance Committee meeting, and, and they had made the request, and, and I realized that I answered, uh, them during their meeting, and I don't think I've had an opportunity to, to comment on it here. Uh, so basically what we found out is that there was, this gets into a, a little bit of accounting, that it, we had about one point one million dollars in the stabilization fund, and we had approved at last year's town meeting to transfer in an additional about one point seven to, to come up with a total of two point eight. And I, I kind of took it as it would be an automatic, that when we had a active financial advisor, that that money would be transferred into the stabilization fund, it would be actively managed. That's why we created an active manager. Uh, what I found out is that the accountant needed to make a journal entry to, to have that happen, and basically, kind of simultaneously, the treasurer had to make kind of a entry too. So that way, the transfer of money from, if you would, the general fund into stabilization fund would be acknowledged by both departments. And generally, that happens in June thirtieth. And with one point seven million dollars going in there, we were getting a tenth of a percent for interest as a, through a bank account. And you can get over one percent, again, not a lot of money in, in the scheme of things, because we don't have long-term investment. But to have it actively managed, we would've got a better return. So when I, I met with the two respective people, the new treasurer and the, uh, I'm sorry, the treasurer and the, the new accountant, uh, we had made that, uh, known to them that why wasn't that transferred? So it was transferred shortly afterwards, so we didn't have to wait till June thirtieth. But that should've occurred earlier.
Thank you, Chris. Peter, anything else? Janelle?
No.
Julie?
No.
Angela? Linda?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Linda Sibula. I heard that explanation. Where is this money sitting, the two point eight million? I heard the blah, 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 we have to make journal entries all over the place. Are you saying that that one point seven million, uh, one point six million dollars from last town meeting did not get transferred as in real money to the investment people, so they didn't invest it?
It was basically kept in a checking account, as opposed to the investment account.
Okay, so we made a million and a half dollars that has not been invested. 'Cause, 'cause what you're earning for, this is really kind of, okay, I'm gonna be blunt here, which I've never been in my life. This is really sinful. Sinful.
Thank you for the explanation, Chris. Moving on to, uh, D, using a portion of the solar field revenue for OPEB, uh, contribution. Chris, this was one, part of our goals and objectives, um, was at least taking up the thought of, of using some of our solar revenues to fund our OPEB account. Is this a?
Yeah, I, I do think, uh, actually, this is kind of a, uh, a, a, a good topic. Uh, we do currently, uh, commit a hundred thousand dollars a year in each of the budgets that I've presented into funding OPEB. That is not, it's not a sufficient amount. Uh, technically, the, the solar field revenue money that we get, the, the Board did originally commit that into, to paying salaries, so that may be something that we would have to have a discussion, that if, if we're not gonna use that as a general fund offset for salary, uh, that we want to shift that over to, uh, starting to head towards funding, um, the OPEB obligation. Uh, we do, you know, it's interesting, the charts, uh, there's a real disconnect with the amount of money that the, uh, the folks tell us we get versus the actual amount of money that we do get. And in looking for that, you know, I, I, I trust the munis numbers, 'cause that's the actual checks that are coming in. So it's about three hundred thousand on the, uh, on the town side. And I think that what I'd like to do, and, and certainly we can put something together, to head towards going from a hundred thousand a year, gradually building up, uh, to three hundred thousand a year, and even going beyond, uh, quite honestly, I, I think we need to do. Uh, but that's something that, we could certainly do that on the, on the short term, and to head that, head in that direction. Uh, what we're doing this year, uh, is that we have a hundred thousand, again, in the, uh, in the health insurance budget that would go to fund that. And then we do have, uh, money that will be, uh, that we had left in, um, free cash that we're making one-time payments to, to try to build that as we go as well. So in this year's budget, we, we have, uh, that contemplated. I believe that you do have the, uh, the balance, I think when I started, it was about three hundred and thirty. Uh, now it is, uh, seven hundred and fifty-seven. And I believe this one has been, uh, actively managed from the time that that was in there, and we had the, uh, active management occur. So that has been getting a, uh, a better estimated annual income.
Thank you, Chris. Peter, any thoughts on this?
Uh, a couple of things. On that same, I guess, mm, this page it shows the highlight. Is our obligation forty-two million and a half million dollars roughly?
Yes.
I think that's important for people to know. Our obligation unfunded, you know, unfunded, um, obligation, uh, moving forward, forty-two million, four hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred and thirty-five, against which we have less than a million dollars, um, set aside. So it's just important, when we start talking, as we have been talking about, you know, it always seems like funding OPEB, funding stabilization are like the, you know, the last things we do with whatever's left, we throw at it. I do think it's important, since we have a source of revenue, which we hadn't expected before, which was the solar field, um, that we should be doing something there, at least that we add that kind of money, a hundred thousand, whenever, every year. The thing I'm pointing out is, I hope someone, um, when I'm not here after three weeks pays attention to the solar field. Um, if you look at the numbers, last year, we generated in total about five hundred and sixty-seven thousand. The current year looks like five hundred and eleven thousand. Our friends at, um.
Sevec? Sevec?
Sevec should be able to tell us that that's a solar resource, like the sun didn't shine as much. Or in fact, is the, uh, solar system or the panels degrading, which they will over time. You know, when Sevec was here, they kind of poo-poo that, but you know, one percent a year starts to be real money. Okay? So it's important somebody do that. There was one point in here, one month, where by looking at this, you could tell some part of the system wasn't working, and nobody picked it up, I think, until I mentioned it to them. And then the next day, they said, oh, yeah, you know, somebody forgot to throw a switch or do this. Well, you know, we're the customer, we need to pay attention, we can't count on them. It is real money, so.
Thank you. Janelle?
I don't have anything.
Julie?
I don't have anything.
Angela?
I'm fine.
Chris, one conversation we had, uh, related to the triple-A bonding, said funding sources, identified funding sources would be helpful for triple-A bonding as well. So can we look at, explore at least a percentage of this money and, and bring it forward for?
Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned that, that, you know, I know people probably are sick of me saying, when I, since I started, you know, that I think we need to target triple-A, but, you know, I, I think that understanding what the liability is and designing a plan to head towards meeting that liability is what they want to see. Uh, there's very, very, I don't think there's any communities that have fully funded their OPEB obligations. Uh, their pension obligation is several communities en masse that, that have funded that. Uh, but yes, uh, we certainly need to put together, this is a, a, a long-term obligation, is, is probably an important way to say that.
Angela?
Can I ask you a question? This forty-two million dollars, it's, that, that we have to pay, over what time period is that? I mean, we don't have to pay it next week, or next year?
Yeah, no, it's, um.
It's probably twenty, thirty, forty years?
It is, it is.
So what is the actual number that we have to come up with each year to cover?
We have the schedule that, I, I don't know if it's on, it, it's not on here. It, you know, or if you look at that, it's probably about a million and a half, and, and we're under, under where we should be in terms of meeting that obligation.
So I, I guess what I say, let's say it's a million and a half. I think we should target trying to get to a million and a half with real dollars.
Right.
But I think that's where we stop, because our taxpayers are gonna have to pay money for wastewater and everything else, so the last thing we want to do is take forty-two million dollars, put it in the bank, and not spend it for forty years or whatever. But I do think we have to get to that, whatever that million and a half dollar number is.
I mean, one of the, one of the things to think about, and, and certainly, you know, when, when you talk about, uh, long-term liabilities, you're talking about a, a, a greater time window, really twenty or thirty years. And under the pension system for Barnstable County, I believe they're on a, uh, the twenty-forty schedule, so by twenty-forty, they'll fully fund the, the liability of our, uh, pension obligation. And, you know, it would be disciplined of the town to, to take that, those funds, uh, you know, approximately three million dollars, and put it into meeting that liability. Uh, that's what you see as some of the models that are out there. I know in my last community, I think the chairman had tracked down my, my plan that I did there, and that's what we had as a, as a funding model. But I think to your point, we, we definitely want to head towards that million and a half, whatever that target number is, and, and sustain that, no more, no less, uh, to, to try to make sure that we get on a path to, to meet that obligation.
You bring that calculation back, Chris.
Actually, uh, just looking, they, they actually are in the process of doing a, uh, update, so you can see two thousand fourteen, I think, is the, the last time they did it. So they'll have a newer report coming out. I'll check on the status when that.
Okay, thank you. Anything else on that from the Board? Town Administrator's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I do have several items, uh, this evening. Just, uh, the first one, uh, we had submitted, uh, through the assessors, uh, the, uh, request for special legislation relative to the senior exemption. Uh, so we did hear back from, um, Senator Peek, uh, Senator, Representative Peak's office, and that they, it has not yet been scheduled for a hearing. Uh, once it is scheduled for a hearing, uh, they will inform us, and then we will be able to submit testimony. I would imagine that the assessors would like to do that, so we can alert.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, also, other communities in the Cape are starting to pick this up. We had a call, actually, to the assessor's office from Martha's Vineyard, looking for more information about it. So, and this all goes back to our previous assessor, David Scannell. As he passed, we looked at other ways that we could assist the seniors in our community, and this was one way. I'm pleased to see that other communities in the Cape are already starting to take it on. And, uh, if we get this legislation passed, it will be a local option for any other community in the state to do the same thing that Harwich has done.
Great, thank you, Richard.
On the, uh, item B, we have, uh, the well water sampling. This, this was, uh, when the folks came in from, uh, the group about the spraying.
Okay, CC.
Yes. Uh, this was the, uh, result, I had indicated that we had done some testing, and that it was below reportable levels, or, or, uh, they, they basically couldn't come up with the testing. So they did test for the, the three, um, known, um, chemicals that were part of the, uh, the herbicide. And that was back in, uh, December of, uh, two thousand fourteen, that, uh, I think I reported that to the Board fairly shortly after that.
Janelle?
Um, Chris, the first, uh, letter in our email in our packet from Neil Salzillo to you, he closes it by saying that it's, it's his suggestion that we test yearly for these chemicals. But this was the last test that was conducted to your knowledge?
Yes.
So we're overdue, according to his recommendation.
Well, I, I think one of the things, just, uh, 'cause I, I saw that myself, and I think by, and I don't remember exactly the, the plan, I thought that they were gonna do kind of a, a more significant spraying, and that's where we went out and had that testing done. And then they were gonna go back and do spot, uh, spot spraying, so it was not gonna be as extensive. So I think at the time that this was done, it was one of the times that they were going through to do the more extensive spraying. Uh, I, I would say, 'cause I was the acting, uh, water superintendent at that point, uh, it was very expensive, almost seven thousand dollars to test for those. And you wouldn't normally continue to test on a, uh, you know, on a, on a regular basis for something that's non-detectable. So i- in my mind, we would probably want to, to link up to the next time they were gonna do a more extensive spraying, to, to maybe run the tests then. Uh, we don't want to, we could test for millions of different things, but if we don't find it, then it's just wasting taxpayer money. So that would be my suggestion, is that we would kind of alert the Water Department that when they were to do spraying again, that we would test again to, to make sure we keep people safe.
Okay. Thank you, Chris.
I do have, uh, we received over the, uh, period of time here, some, uh, letters of commendation. Uh, so I just wanted to, uh, acknowledge, uh, a couple people that, that received letters. Uh, one in the, uh, audience this evening is Carolyn Carey. Uh, got a, a letter of appreciation from the president of the New Horizons Band of Cape Cod, uh, who had to, uh, find a venue for a special concert, and she was able to, uh, to work that out. So I appreciate Carolyn's efforts and helping people to, uh, when they approach the town. Also, uh, we had a, a architect, a local architect. We also had a, uh, a local architect, uh, well, I don't know if he's local, a, an architect, uh, just submit a letter of thanks to our, uh, our folks in the Planning Department, uh, specifically identifying Shayla Delaney and Jay Briggs, uh, as being very helpful and courteous. Uh, certainly, this is a, a message that we try to drive home, uh, that, you know, everyone is a, uh, is a potential customer and should be treated with respect, so it, it's nice to see some of these, uh, these letters coming in. And the last one is, uh, from a, a school teacher, fifth grade science teacher, Catherine Kane, who just wanted to acknowledge the, uh, efforts of Heinz Proft in, in terms of, uh, taking, uh, some of the students on the shellfish tours, uh, teaching about aquaculture, and, um, just his efforts for going kind of above and beyond, uh, with the, uh, students to, to educate them to, um, to some of the efforts of the town and the importance of shellfish in the environment. Also, just on the, uh, departure note, uh, Kate Godet, uh, from our Town Clerk's Office had submitted a, uh, a letter of resignation. She, she's in the process of, uh, retirement. She's in the process of retirement. And I just wish to acknowledge her lengthy service with the town and just wish to kind of publicly thank her for her efforts in the town clerk's office. I think the town clerk's office is an area where we do get a lot of compliments from folks for them being very, very helpful. So we appreciate Kate's efforts. And then the last item that I have is, I do wish to just acknowledge for the Board that I did receive a request from the Friends of the Community Center. They had formed a, I'm going to get some of these legal elements wrong, but they basically formed a trust element and they raised money for the purposes of construction of a building. And the town did proceed to construct the building and put together the community center. Did I misspeak already? He even left his cane. No offense. It's late, it's late. Friends of the Harwich Council on Aging. Friends of Harwich Council on Aging. Not the community center. But thank you for your support. It's just the lateness of the hour and me talking too much. I'm sorry, Jack. Yeah, just sit there. That's a good, that's a good point. So the gist of... The gist of, you probably want to hold off signing different things there. Just, sorry. So Friends of the Harwich Council on Aging, Inc. had established a trust document that was focused on doing building improvements or constructing a building. The building's already up and they would like to approach the town and have the Selectmen's acquiescence. And because it's a trust document, it had to go through the Attorney General's Office. And in order to change the charge of that to allow for program support of the Council on Aging, that the Selectmen would need to kind of initiate their support, that they're in support of it. I know the Council on Aging is also supportive of the change. I'm 0 for 2, so this is a...
Very good. The Attorney General's Charities Division, Nonprofit Division has assented to our proposal, which is very important because that's their job and they supported us. They could have said no, or it could have been mum. The COA Board voted unanimously to support this proposal. And what we're seeking for you is your assent or acquiescence so that we can state that we have the support of the following groups. Can you just identify yourself for the record? Jack Brown?
Thank you.
Can I remember this, Friends of Harwich Council on Aging, right now? The Attorney General's Stat Committee. Our intent is to put this on the agenda pre-town meeting so that we can vote on it because it's not on the agenda tonight. So we will vote on it next week.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The attorney is reviewing the paperwork and will have everything ready for the package for the pre-town meeting session.
Thank you, Chris.
That concludes my comments this evening.
Selectmen's Report. Peter?
I'm good, thank you.
Janelle?
Nothing.
Angela?
Nothing.
Julie?
Nothing.
We are adjourned. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We are adjourned.